All right, YouTube is back, continue.
All right, so I'm gonna say using the framework of the current regs, prevent the lifetime ability to draw upon harvest, more limited draw licenses, not retroactively, of all bulls, rams, and goats except auction, raffle, and BSAF tribal land tags.
I'm not sure that there's a five-year wait exemption on BSAF, and so I think we're opening a new, new regulatory discussion as it relates to BSAF in once in a lifetime. I don't think there's an exemption, at least not that I'm, again, I'm scrambling to search through regs here, but I don't see there for the five-year wait on rams, there is an exemption for auction and raffle and the special management licenses. I don't see anything for BSAF.
Can we change it to say using the framework of the current regs and using the framework, or here we go, using the framework and exemptions of the current regs and then remove the bottom part?
I'd like to leave auction and raffle there, just to be clear.
Okay, but then if it is exempted somewhere?
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I don't think we're trying to change what has already been decided by the commission and agency.
There you go.
We're just trying to change five-year wait into lifetime.
So do we want to read something about BSAF at the bottom?
I think you risk alienating the landowners that are giving us access to the ten tags.
But I'm assuming if there's an exemption there already.
Yeah, I don't know if there is though. Just to be clear, I wanna make sure we say it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can, we can look it up, but I would leave it in these notes for sure. And the intent of this group was to not ex, uh, maybe that tag.
Between RFW and BSAF, two different programs, two different things. If there's a discussion around it, we should involve the program coordinator.
Agreed.
So we haven't gotten this detailed, and some of our other recommendations, just want to be clear, we might be drilling into those rabbit holes. But um, this is important. So read the words again. Any comments or questions, Pete? Any? Very good. We're just the words right now. Do they make sense to a new reader, right? Somebody from out of state, commission member?
Can I ask a question?
It's a combination of plain English and lawyer talk.
Um, are we gonna vote on this? Because that's my question.
Right about now, assuming.
Can you um, can you just add mountain goats of either sex, just since we are already getting very specific?
No, LaMonte's.
And bull moose, and just say, say bull moose instead of just bulls. African moose, yeah. Sorry, Brian, sorry, Brian. It's, anything about rams? Big, yeah, uh, Rocky Mountain bighorn rams. Yeah, it's already once in a lifetime, so Rocky Mountain bighorn rams.
Huh? Sorry. I heard part of it.
Stay. Stay like.
Once it's all settled, it's really easy.
All right. Have we covered all the if, square fours?
We don't think it's gonna be unanimous. It could be helpful to stop sharing our screen. Emma recommended that so we could see the, like owl camera better, or I can just record.
Oh, yeah, I can stop share for a second.
Just record.
Everybody needs to read this first. Any more changes? Letting lawyers out there. All right, so I suggest we take a vote. Any disagreement? Good. So, I'm gonna stop now. Knowing what we know, all those supporting the recommendation, that this working group make a recommendation to the committee, uh, comporting with all those fine words we just showed, that we essentially extend the five-year to a lifetime man who are the male versions of those species. And I'll go to the nannies.
Those of either sex.
Those of either sex.
No, LaMonte's.
All right, uh, all those favoring say aye and raise your hand. Almost there. Okay, hold on. Yeah, one, two, three. All the three.
Yeah.
Good.
Do we get a vote from Commissioner Otero online?
Uh, I think she said it earlier.
He had a chat earlier.
I got a chat, support once in a lifetime harvest, but that was before we went into lawyer.
Oh, yeah.
I would put him as a soft yes.
It looks like he dropped off. He might have lost service or something.
I don't see him online.
All right, I can bet that Otero was not involved with that.
Correct. Okay. Let's move forward. Our next up is group applications. Just as a reminder, it's been a while. There are no group applications for moose or desert sheep, two applicant maximum for bighorn and mountain goats. Residents and non-residents cannot apply together. So can or should there be consistency between these species? Should groups be allowed to continue for bighorn and mountain goats?
I just recommend status quo. I think this is almost a non-issue when it comes to group applications for bighorn sheep and mountain goats. If someone chooses to do that, they're limiting their options, but it's up to them, so I don't see any reason to not allow it.
From, from a service perspective, is it useful to have this out there?
No, but to John's point, if the applicant is choosing that, it's their choice.
So we're offering something that wouldn't be in their interest?
Well, it would be if it actually, if they draw both of the people in the group.
Okay.
So, I mean technically, yes, but.
I understand. I just wanna make, okay. I think Terry.
I could take it or leave it, to be honest. I, I am aware that some people have applied, and I'm fairly certain I know um, of two people who were successful on a group application for goats. So it has happened, but they are limiting their options. I mean, if you wanted to change it for simplicity, fine, but uh, I think some people like it and it probably helped the rest of us by doing so, um, so I guess.
So remember our vision, right? That should be our filter here. Sometimes I feel like you're, you're, there's a little smirk when we look at this one, so. Be thoughtful about how does this, how would any change or no change help us further meet the vision that we've established?
For consistency and um, we're trying to make things simpler, I would say that it should go away. It's not really helping our customers, and we're looking at getting a whole new iPaws whatever system. Let's make life simpler and not complicate issues. If it's not helping anybody, what are we doing?
I, I mean, I, I would leave it that one.
I'll echo that.
Doug?
I'd echo that as well.
Austin?
I, I would say there would be two decisions for me, either do away with it and not allow it for sheep and goat, or we extend it to moose. There's more moose licenses on a lot of those hunts. For consistency's sake, we, if it's a non-issue here, we like it, then let's extend it to moose. If not, do away with all of it.
Right. Eric?
I could just say, um, I don't know if it, so is anybody's opinion that the successful applicants I know were father and sons, so they went on father and son hunt. Doesn't matter to me.
Well, it's important. Uh, so yeah, absolutely bring up all, all angles of this. We want to have a full discussion.
I agree with Commissioner, let's get rid of it. It's not helping for the most part, and it, it's a disservice to our customers.
Remember, for the vast majority, make it easier. Okay, you got, go ahead.
I completely agree with first, but I'm curious, did they both harvest?
No, I don't think either one harvested. It was actually sheep.
Okay. Awesome.
Uh, there's a, there's a lot of people I run into that just do not wanna hunt on their own, and they, statistics aside, right, like a group application essentially just merges two applications into one. So as long as you're not the last one drawn, this license available, a group application is fine. You're gonna draw, it's gonna give you the quota of two. Until there's only one license left, and that's where you throw yourself out. So statistically, if you hurt yourself.
We also do it on both of them. So you take the lowest.
You're right. I'm assuming they have the same points, right? They're equal. It's two buddies that wanna hunt together. They're scared to go and go hunting, scared to go and sheep hunting by themselves, and they're all, all are nothing. Equal, so is it bad to allow it? I don't know if it's necessarily bad. Does it help them? Is it in their best interest? Maybe that's what they want to do, and like the father and son scenario. Uh, some people just have different expectations of what hunting is to them. They're scared of the mountains. These are mountain animals, and they just don't wanna do it by themselves, so I don't know, it's a bad thing to offer. It doesn't hurt everybody.
But I, but I can bring someone with me, right?
Yes, sure.
Okay. You, you can always bring somebody with you. I can tell you, having been with people or been on hunts, the level of motivation for someone to take a week or two off of work and go to the mountains with you and sleep in a tent is much higher if they have a tag in the group. So if you could benefit somebody by saying, hey, listen, I'll go if you go, that's fine. You might not have a group of friends that are ready to go at a moment's notice. I would say leave it, just to say, if you wanna do it, go right ahead. There's nothing to stop them as applying to separate people. So you're not really hurting anybody. And to Austin's point, it, it probably only is impacting, they don't ever, like, you can't apply in it, well, you probably could apply in a sheep unit that only has one tag as a group, and then you throw yourself out.
You're good.
Yeah, so that, that's their, you know, that's their problem.
But to the, to whoever's point it was, that's what they're choosing to do, so. We can go, you, John, you go with us.
I would, where do you wanna go? Happy to go.
The giant langur.
Yeah, I had given this exactly zero thought until just now. But after hearing this conversation, I think I'm in the line in the camp of leave it and extend it to moose. And then it's consistent with all the other species. We have one set for everything.
Except desert.
Except desert, they're always special.
So we leave it where you have to be, it can't be non-residents and residents in the same group, and how many people can be in the same group?
I gotta ask that question, John, too, because I don't understand how that would work in the realm of sheep, goats, versus, I do understand how it works with Euro cattle and parrot, but when you mentioned earlier about having to have the same points in the weighted world, how does that work? How does a group application even work?
Goes to the lowest.
Yeah, so it goes to whatever the lowest points are, so three and five, and three and zero, you'd be at three and zero. And then it goes to the.
Application, I'm red a group leader.
I think it's the.
It's application over the group leader.
So yeah, okay. Application number.
I'm happy to jump.
Hey, it's been a long time since I looked at that. So then basically you go through as one person. You take the group leader's application and whatever the lowest is, and we shove them together, and if there's two licenses, they.
See, that matters in a priority points-based world. That doesn't matter so much in a random world. Did you point in that?
Matters less.
We're, yeah, we're in a points world.
In the bonus world.
So that goes back to, we're extending it to moose. Are we extending the, you have to be in the same residency? Are we extending?
Whatever the regular rules are.
Okay.
Look, and why would we not go all the way to desert?
There's too many, there's too few tags. You could.
I mean, the principle is, are the, do we care?
I think we're getting more coffee.
No, actually not. If this, this is actually, if we did this, it'd be the same for everything.
Yeah.
And it's consistent, and there's a way to kick somebody out. There's no points involved with desert sheep. It would just be the group leader's application number, and you join up with somebody as long as there's two tags left.
Say, how many hunts do we have that we have?
All of them, except for the non-resident.
Okay.
Alki can do that.
Okay, so we're saying, uh, I'm, I'm in this room, just tilted all the way from one side to the other. It's pretty fun. I mean, this is why we talk, right? I just heard a little of that extra information, and I started to change my mind. Um, but we're not there yet, so. What do you got, Jonathan?
It works.
Good. So at this point, I'm reading, oh, Pete.
So, is there any impact for the group applications as far as wildlife populations or overharvest or anything? Because it's all the lowest number. So I wonder.
Their licenses were issued anyway.
Yeah.
There are licenses that we're issuing on a limited basis. It doesn't matter if they are hunted as a group or separate.
And it's the lowest point person, not the highest on them.
In the group, yeah.
It's the lowest point person in the group.
What's the limits we don't have? What's the group?
As their limit size?
Think we.
No, we don't over allocate it. If there's not two tags.
For the ones that are allowed today.
Oh.
Bighorn and then uh.
There's two in the group. So we would go with uh, the lowest point total of both people.
Yep.
So it's the same as two people put in individual licenses or going for an application. For all three, four.
Essentially all four at this point.
So what, would it make desert sheep more complex then? No, because it's zero, zero, it doesn't make, almost doesn't make any sense for desert, zero, zero, but.
You don't even have points for desert, so how do you?
Any applications?
Just the applications. I feel like a regular, yeah.
So desert, you would have group applications, zero is.
But it's not gonna change anything.
It's not gonna change anything in zero, zero. It's almost more complicated, but I don't know, no.
You're basically just, instead of Austin and I having two chances, one of us drawing a tag, we have one chance at both of us drawing a tag.
And that's just individual human kind of thing. Hey, we wanna go together, or we don't wanna go at all?
I think, actually, that's what turned into the room, was this concept of two people are really committed and don't wanna go alone, let's, let's let them.
There's no impact to points, preference points, our, our animals or anything, it's just.
I just have one thing for you, John. When we did the staff discussion, there was a, like a little committee or whatever around group applications, and there was a sense that they just are complicated to.
We need group.
Yeah.
That, that's on the back end, no.
Well, I'm just trying to remind, but it's not.
This is complexity in the draw.
Yeah, it's not for lack of uh, effort that these things happen, right? It's extra effort that these things happen. But if this, if this group believes on the merits that offering this opportunity to hunters on the open market, et cetera, their own free will, et cetera, et cetera, then we should just follow what the group believes. Uh, but I wanted to raise that up. It's not, it's not free to administer. It's a difficult process. So, any last thoughts?
For.
Just one more that John brought up.
Sure.
He asked how many group applications are actually in these draws that I see. I never even tracked them because there were so few of them. So if, if that helps or hinders, I don't know, but if we're gonna leave them, I don't think it, it would matter terribly for these species.
So what, let me, let me, let me frame it this way then, just quickly. So when we look at the new system, right, and building the requirements, if we have to build these for this, these species, we would have them for deer and elk and pronghorn, right? So there's nothing, it's not additional work to have that capability here.
No, if we were building out the draws as we're going towards right now, then everything is at least somewhat the same. It would already be there, so.
Okay, just clarify.
Turn it on or turn it off, basically.
Nice, which is what we wanna do in that future state. All right, any other thoughts here? Do we want, right, right now, the proposal is something like just extend this capability or these rules for moose and desert sheep. That seems to be the center of gravity right now. Is that, is it, should we go to a vote? Okay, should this group recommend to the commission that uh, group applications be available for moose and desert sheep? If you answer yes, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. No, thirteen. Wait, no, sorry. We're gonna get this right now. Hold on, let me uh, I'm gonna stop the show. All right, so we're gonna go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, yay, and two nay. You can't say about.
It's a keeping careful track of the vote now, huh?
Just to be clear, Brian, my vote would be to make it consistent that opposite way, not leave it status quo either.
To remove the group application.
Or these.
All, all together.
Species.
Yes.
Customers are confused one way or another. Either they wanna, they know that they wanna do group applications, and when they're all applying, no one applies correctly, and so they're kicked out anyways, or
you have people who are confused who don't know what group applications are, and so they're calling you, and now they're even more confused because that option is there.
You understand that people really enjoy going together, and there are especially non-residents that if they wanna come to Colorado and spend the money and spend the time, like, they wanna have that tag in hand. But I don't know.
But is that, sorry.
No, what?
Is that, is that an issue more for deer elk versus sheep goat moose?
I get the questions for all of them, but more so deer, elk, and um, you know, those guys, but if we're going for simplicity, I guess they just.
That's why we're here. Uh, we, we, we had a discussion, everybody flipped, a lot of people flipped their vote, so that's interesting.
And when somebody thought about it for the first time. I can take, thanks for the humble. It hasn't been high on my radar.
All right, um, moving forward then. Any other existing issues or concerns? We have a couple, for example, high application rates persist after the preference points fee. Should this group attempt to address application rates? For example, choose one of the big three to apply for each year, uh, or other ideas, et cetera, and so on. So.
Sure.
We're not addressing high application rates in any species.
We're about to when we talk about this other idea.
Which idea?
The choose your, choose your species or poison.
Oh.
So when we get to it.
Yeah, but I guess my, my point is like to elk, the reality is we have hundreds of, for everything, we have, we're not addressing those, and it's, it kind of just goes in ratios, no matter what, we don't have the supply to meet the demand. Um, and I, I guess my thought is, is if we're gonna address it somewhere, we maybe should address it everywhere.
Andy, if you wanna.
Yeah.
Um. Do we know how many people in the moose, sheep, and goat draw are the same people? Out of fifty thousand moose applicants are twenty thousand of the same twenty thousand that are applying for sheep and the same twenty thousand are applying for goat.
I can't tell you for sure, but it's most likely it's everybody applying for.
Yeah, that, and so one of my questions is, we're talking about only being able to apply for one. If we're gonna limit once in a lifetime, I think we should do what some other states do and rank them and say, if you want, you get a sheep tag, a moose tag, or a goat tag, you cannot have two and you cannot have three. I know people have drawn all three, it's in the same year. It's actually very panicky, I would say. So I would be fine with saying you can apply for all three, but you can only draw one, and then we rank them either by the total number of applicants or however we wanna do it, where you let them pick. My first choice for the three would be, I'd like to draw a sheep tag before I draw a goat tag before I draw a moose tag. And that would kick out, what, six hundred applicants on the moose side that could be out of the sheep draw, so it's just a thought.
So apply for all three, but only draw one? And, and in order, and in order of preference?
Either order of preference or you, so, I mean, what I don't like about the Utah system is Utah, if you draw a once in a lifetime deer tag, you're kicked out of.
Any deer tag.
Any deer tag, you're kicked out of sheep, moose, goat license. So I don't apply for a point so that I know that I'm at least in the draw for those other ones. So there, there's probably some way to do it, but I think it, it may help some people get over that he drew, she drew two tags in a year or whatever, so.
I don't wanna.
I don't know how you.
I don't know, my brain's shot, but I was gonna point that would we wanna do that for all three? Are we talking sheep and goat and moose? Because to me, moose is a very different atmosphere than sheep and goat is. So would we want to say all three of them, that you have to pick those three, or would it be a sheep and goat thing? And, I don't know.
How, how is it different now? I'm just, can you elaborate?
Well, there's so many more, I mean, there's more licenses, there's more applicants, it's, doesn't seem, I mean, don't get me wrong, moose is not an elk license, but it doesn't seem to be as crazy as sheep and goat is when it's twenty-two years and I'm trying to draw this, and there's only two tags and.
If you look at bull moose, though, it's still the hardest to draw license. A bull moose is still our lowest odds.
We still have all the other options. Like, you have all the cow options we have, so I, I.
You need to talk to some more bull moose.
Yeah, and this is a problem, not going in all that all the time, but those seem to have more of an option of what I wanna draw compared to your sheep and goat ones that are, if you draw one, you're lucky.
All right, so that made for all two, all three, or just uh, sheep and uh, goat, right? And I had Andy and Terry.
Okay, so I, I know people don't like being told what to do, so with that, with, with that caveat, we've talked about a lot of things here, and we voted on a lot of things that honestly are not going to change people's chance of drawing anything. If we restrict people's ability to apply for a license for only one of sheep, goat, or moose in a year, they could still get points for the other two in the years they didn't apply for a license. But if you're restricted to the ability to apply for an actual license, then that dramatically, to John's point, we don't know the exact numbers, but it will definitely improve the draw odds for any one given species. And, and in my experience, people usually have one that they really want. Like, and partly it's because they've drawn one or two and haven't drawn the other one, or it's just the one that they've always wanted. And so for those people that they're, they're self-selecting the one that they're most interested in. And their odds will improve because the applicants will be dividing themselves between four, because we would include desert sheep in this. Um, the applicants would be dividing themselves between four different species, and so the odds will actually go up for everybody. Mathematically, they have to. So that's, I think it's definitely an idea to discuss, and this is the group to think about it.
So that's different. You're saying, straight up off the top, you only get to apply for one.
For a license.
The other one is I can apply for three, but I only get four?
Does it apply for Rocky Mountain?
Are you including desert or no?
I'm, I'm, don't worry about it, I'm good.
Need some candy, sugar, caffeine.
I'm gonna list them.
But some of.
That would be an and or kind of mix and match problem, right?
Sorry, uh, but I think desert sheep should be included because depending on which system we decide to choose, you know, if, if we go to a, we're gonna, number one, I don't think we can let the applicant choose which one they wanna draw first and apply for all four. That would make John's job on the draw impossible, because
They do have a different.
You have to, you have to draw the, yeah, there has to be a sequence to the draw. So, um, you, people would have to self-select what they wanted to apply for, like Andy was talking about. Um, I'm much more in favor of the idea of only being able to draw one license versus only being able to apply for one license.
And to be clear, I'm saying you could still buy points for the other ones, and then that way, when you knock one off, you, you're still in the game on the other ones.
Yeah, I understand. I'm trying to decide how, how much different the result is gonna be from those two options, and I understand that it would be different because you're not gonna have as many applications in the initial draw for each species. Even though you're gonna be picking people off that are successful. Odds are gonna be significantly better. Odds are gonna be significantly better for your, your yeah, and, and, and the point I was trying to make is depending on what system we choose, um, you have to include desert, or you have to include
Yeah, I would Cause you get down goat and moose, you can still apply for desert, just not rocky. So it's desert and or rocky, I think is the way to
Yeah.
Wait. I don't have that yet, I got moose.
Pick one.
Yeah, oh, yours is pick one, not
Pick one. Pick one.
That's right, apply for but you can't apply for rocky and desert at the same time.
No.
Otherwise you gotta make sure you
So what would be
So it's moose, goat, on the apply, they can only draw one of am I, am I faithful here?
And I would add license each year, Brian, only apply for one license, you could still get a point for the others.
I got that. Apply for all, uh, and or, so there's like a mix in there, but can only draw one, we agree on that?
Is this one way?
This is just one choice architecture, right? Just one possible choice, just trying to make sure I reflect the ask and then we can worry about voting later, but let's get the language right.
I think we have to delete that in order of preference, cause the the draws happen at different times, one happens in May, one happens in April.
So no preferencing, I can't say my top favorite, okay.
There are no points still for desert.
Well, the sequence right now.
But points for the others. Okay. Uh, Doug?
Yeah, I, I would I like the idea of having to select the, one of the four that you're going to draw for, before you um, before you submit and then, you know, get preference points for the other ones, of course, you know, with desert big horns, it would, your odds would probably go up because there'd be fewer people in in that draw, I mean, it, it doesn't matter if it's a lottery or, or preference points or just uh, smaller samples.
Very, very Andy, in principle.
Yeah, the odds have to go up, put everything, cause the, the applicants are
Yeah, the denominator is less.
Are now having to pick.
Fair enough.
Pete.
Right. I'm not sure why we're trying to manage people of what they can apply for for animals, so I like to keep things open for people.
So he's just saying because your odds would be better if you did.
Yeah, but
Your odds would be better for one species.
One species.
But I think we're trying one license out of three choices, now that's a whole different statistical question, but
Yeah, I don't think we should be taking people's uh, choices away from them.
That's why I led with people don't like being told
People don't like being told what to do, uh, and again, one, a couple of the comments said that they wanna be able to experience all that Colorado has, so we're taking people's choices away from them. So the people should figure what they wanna hunt, we shouldn't try to dictate them what they can hunt every year. And biology can support it, you know, manage it by uh, manage the licenses, you know, by the biology and what the land can support, and we shouldn't try to manage the people, you know, through through, kind of through the process.
Awesome.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the whole thing, uh, like with my crystal ball, what this would do, uh, I'm not aware of a state where you can where you could, option A, where you apply for one license, but you can still double dip and buy points for the other one. I see that as a little concession to maybe keep the peace, cause if you just said you can only pick one, everything blows up, right?
Everything blows up, yeah, people are already invested in this twenty-five years and I'm not trying to say you have to walk away from two species.
Right, they like their points, um.
And you could choose one year, like moose works better later and the next year you could go earlier for sheep, you could change up one year or the next year.
I'm just looking at the numbers, right, like your moose applicants are almost twice the amount of applicants as sheep or goat, right, so it's trying to picture what that would do, how many people would pull out of the sheep to stick with moose, you know, what that would look like, I, I don't know, it's hard to predict.
I think goat would go down probably the most, cause I think less people are involved in a goat. And I think you'd have a split between people going, I really wanna bighorn, or I really wanna moose, and I think you'd see a reduction to Andy's point in both of those.
I would definitely request, so Utah does this, like we've talked about Utah quite a bit. One thing that gets messed up from a draw's perspective is they don't pull the applicants out of the draw report that were ineligible, cause they drew earlier in the sequence, so we would I would demand some transparency on the draw report of truly who without, who was in, if they could only buy a point, that would help. But if, if we adopt option two, I would really wanna see that they were ineligible, you know, in subsequent draws down the line, to know what truly happened, are, are my odds better, I don't know. What's the public would say to this?
I can't wrap my head around how we do one million points, cause I can, I can make the system allow you to only apply for one and whichever one you apply for first is what you get. But I can't make the system allow you to apply for like Rocky Mountain and then only have points for the other ones. So right now our system does not pull data back. So like, it'll, it'll show you what your points are, but that's in the system right now. But it won't go back and look at an application and pull what you have out of that.
Aren't we gonna have to reprogram this whole thing, John, to do all the things we're talking about?
Well, I mean, this right now, what you're talking about, I can tell you that our current system will not do.
But I mean, we're talking, a reprogram.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that would be something, but
But we can just say the system
How do you, how do you do desert?
So desert is, um, we have it said that if you already have a Rocky Mountain on file, you can't apply for desert. If you already have a desert on file, you can't apply for Rocky Mountain.
So why can't you just implement that for everything?
So I can do that for everything and just make, you can only be able to apply for one. But that makes you ineligible to get preference points on the other species.
Okay.
Could, could could you um, set it up so that they could only apply for, I mean, could it be coded so that they could only hot code, or a preference point hot code? I mean, uh, if they entered a, if they entered a real hot code
Yes.
And said, sorry, you've already, you've already entered a moose app, only eligible hot code is nine nine nine. Or, you know.
In theory, yes, the only thing that I'm worried about is, I know that the current vendor, the way that we do it, it is not a two-way street on there, so I don't know if the not even our current system, but just our current vendor has
Rocky Mountain and desert, these are gonna put in a hot code, you're right, you don't get the preference.
So you don't get the preference points, yeah, so I mean, I, I can do that where you have the four and I can only give you one, that's piece of cake, I can do that in three minutes.
Yeah, and I'm not proposing that.
Yeah, the, the only one that I, I can't wrap my head around and I can't sit you here and tell you that it's not possible or it couldn't be programmed, I'm just saying, right now I know our vendor does not do the two-way communication.
Cause it wouldn't be going in the draw.
So, you, you, you'd apply for your sheep tag and then our vendor would have to be able to look at your sheep application and say you didn't apply for a preference point. In goat, you can apply for X, Y, and Z, or you did apply for a preference point in goat, now you can apply for a so I, I don't know that, but I think it'd be interesting.
Uh, I'm just gonna say a system likely cannot track communicating point eligibility between species.
Current system.
Current system can. Feel free to work with it.
Where did we land on the last meeting conversation about your, your uh, recommendation of checking for a preference point and then moving on to your application? Not go anywhere else.
Supported by the group.
So if we had something like that
That's your species.
What you, which you're, yeah, you're gonna do more than one, pick which one you're gonna apply for, and here's your option to, if you want preference points for these others.
Make it a different product?
I was just thinking the three with the two boxes in this, there's a business rule that they can only have one, where they say they're applying.
Oh, yeah. I think we could do that.
It's kinda what I was thinking too.
I'd like to see.
You're talking like our unsuccessful options boxes?
Yeah.
So we'd have all three species on there and then you get to collect and then put your options in and
But only one could have, I wanna apply for the species, they would have to put preference points on the other two. Or three.
That is an option.
We might have to drink a beer this weekend.
You'd have to put the points on the others?
No, 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 I said that is one that we could do.
So again, to carry forward our recommendation on making people choose upfront whether they wanna apply for a point or a license. Keep that for these species as well, and it would make it easier to implement this. Apply for one.
The point only would make a product and then it would just be a business rule. You make it a separate product. Yeah.
So I'm getting a little tired, but I have a question. Good to hear it. Should this group attempt to address the application rates? We're trying to fix the problem, but we haven't answered the first question.
Yeah, it was a prompt because we, we, we talked about it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but that, that's what I'm saying is we haven't, we're, we're sitting here trying to fix the problem, but we haven't addressed if we need to address the problem, if that makes sense. That didn't come out in English.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you, um, so just a couple of things, time check, number one, uh, we've got fifty minutes till five o'clock. Couple of things we wanna do before, uh, we let you go is, uh, for we wanna wrap up some talking points for those areas where we did reach agreement, and uh, so that's a little bit just of a quick review. Remember, we're gonna have, uh, three of us, uh, four of us presenting to the commission again uh, those points and the discussion that we've had today, being faithful to everything that was said, including the divi- you know, diverging opinions and so on. Um, and also, we wanna be able to, uh, schedule a, kind of a quick talk with those folks, so we need a little bit of time for that. And then, uh, we thought we might do a group picture along the wall here, since we have a beautiful backdrop. Uh, this could be a good thing for our final report, uh, to have a, a photo of us all, if you're comfortable being in a photo. Uh, that would be your, your choice. And so that, all that stuff, we think is like fifteen minutes sort of at the end, something like that. So just wanna make sure we, uh, we, we parked a little bit time, that gives us about you know, twenty minutes or so to finish up the total content here. Right? I see a bunch of arms. Awesome.
Trying to decide what to do with this, I, I think it, we need to like vote on those individually, um, knowing that they
Yeah.
Maybe let everybody vote on both as two options.
Could be, that's what I've got now, is, well, the number one, the first one is clearly different than the second one in red. So that's how I'm thinking of it so far, but please make suggestions.
So, I was just gonna say, if it would help everybody to know how many people apply multiple species.
That was a question on the top.
I'd say I can do that, but it's gonna be next meeting, so everyone put theirs off till next meeting. I can do that one, it's just gonna take a while.
Problem with that is we're trying to present recommendations to the commission before that meeting.
You don't have a two meeting, uh, yeah.
I, I'd love to tell you I could pull it in forty minutes, but I couldn't even get one of the reports out in forty minutes.
I'm not sure the exact numbers matter, because people are going to change their behavior once they have to choose anyway.
When you said that it would be a lot of them that would apply for many, everyone kinda nodded their heads. There might be just a general acknowledgement that that would be the case, but that was just me reading a quick room. No.
I just, third option, status quo.
Oh, wow, actually.
You feel lucky. Hey, free chance to you're right, an issue
Status quo, baby.
Uh, well, honestly, that was something that I didn't consider and I, that's great to have that option on the table, but um, I just feel like, in the interest of keeping things more simple, it would be easier to just let people continue to apply like they do and say, this is the draw order and you can only draw a license. Um, you know, which is option, um
Two.
Two.
Yep.
You know, that, that's more simple to explain, I think. And obviously, there's gonna be people who are really pumped that their most important species is drawn first. There's gonna be people really sad that their most important species is drawn last, but um, I don't know, I, I'm really nervous about the idea, I, I think there's a lot of complications around option number one and uh, it's gonna be a lot more, uh, customer consternation.
I think I'm on board with the same, I, John's recommendation or proposal for one a year makes a lot of sense to me, I'd be behind that. As far as, um, this other, don't know that I'm fully there yet, I said, it's a tough one to swallow, especially when you've been in that system for so long, using all of your options, all these are my opportunities for the year, I may give one of these three. So you're right, it increases your chances, your odds for one species, but decreases potentially over if you're one of those people that apply for all three. And then to select which one, you start jumping around, well, I didn't get moose last year and I'm gonna try for bighorn this year. You're actually reducing your odds over time. But using randomness, you're putting in play, it's a tough one, it's an interesting thought.
Um, I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around how the second option here is it, do the CPW dictate the draw order?
Yeah.
Or be, if you draw one of those, you're only allowed to pick one of what you drew, like I'm trying to understand.
There's, there's a draw order.
And the draw order stays the same?
Yeah, every, and the, and the applicant knows the draw order.
So you apply for all of them.
Communicate that currently.
Yeah.
If you, if you apply for all of them, say moose is first in the draw order, then that's we're gonna apply for more than one species, that's your priority every, every year.
You, you have the choice of putting in for a point for that and we're, we're risking getting kicked out of the other draws.
So how is that, I guess, different from the top one of being able to do a point and achieve one, it, both result in one license a year.
But, oh, but the bottom of results in four, or three applications and the top one only results in one.
Only, only applying once here, you pick first yourself, here you can do all four, but then you only draw one.
So you have less applicants with the first one than the second.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, sorry, just going around here, Lauren?
I mean, following that, then I, I still would, I guess, support the first option, cause like Austin said, you're I guess you're still kind of on that middle ground where, yeah, you're, you're saying, you know, you have to, you only get to apply for one license, but you can still gain points. And I don't think it's that much more complicated than the second one. And in terms of the current system likely not being able to track, I mean, if, if all of our recommendations end up being approved, we're gonna have to get a completely new system anyways, right, like our, our current system cannot do a majority of what we discussed across all of our meetings, so in theory that current system not likely able to do it wouldn't be a wall to cross, but I I know that the likelihood of getting something that'll perfectly be what we want is unlikely, but I don't know, it just seems like even though I don't think it would be that complicated for people to learn and understand.
Okay.
So I, I think I'm more in favor of the first option.
Yeah. Doug?
Could we not, um, might move moose up to win the drawing for, um, sheep and goat are? And, and why not?
Quarters aren't set yet.
Okay. And then the other question I had was just to be clear, um, with either of these options, if you didn't draw your sheep tag or whatever tag it was, um, the, I mean, if you drew, i- if we went with number one and you didn't draw that, you'd still have the option to get a preference point, right?
Yeah.
Looks like, yeah.
Awesome, I wanted to go back to the first, what Jenny said, like, are we addressing high application rates? Um, I'll go back to my financial hat, I don't wanna do anything to hurt CPW financially. And I don't wanna hurt the applicant by pricing them out, um, and so I think still allowing to purchase all points like option one is great, that doesn't, that shouldn't change, uh, too much of the revenue from applications and preference point fees in my mind. How to address application rates, option two does not do much for draw odds or application rates in the sense that you can only draw one, so it pulls a few people out of the next species, pulls a few people out. By the time you get to the most draw, you've pulled out less than a thousand people out of the draw. Uh, doesn't look better, does it sound better, yes, but I'm looking at option one and that's what I'm hung up on, if there's twenty-six thousand residents applying for twenty-six thousand residents applying for sheep and forty-four thousand for moose. A lot of those twenty-six thousand sheep guys are guaranteed appearing in that moose draw. So I would say, does option one have the potential for a moose guy who's trying to get a moose tag to take half the applicants out of the draw pool? It might, and is is that what they're asking for, to improve fair and a better chance? It has the opportunity to force them to choose and to make a substantial difference of draw odds for those individuals that just want a moose?
That's the intent.
Yeah, that's exactly the idea behind it, is you, by forcing people to choose, you remove applicants.
The denominator.
Mathematical fact, if people are applying for multiple species, you remove a lot of applicants from the other species.
And and just to follow up with that, when we, when we did this in Utah, it was for non-residents only, but we used to make non-residents choose, deer, elk, and one species, and sheep must go by some one species. And when we allowed them sixteen years ago now to apply for everything, because we love the money, so we get sixteen dollars per application, and we've got eleven species, give us your money. But that draw is just went poof, way out the window, because it allowed tens of thousands more people to play the board all across. Even though you can only draw one, it's just flooded with applicants, so this does help pare down option one on the amount of overall applicants, which, does that address application rates, yes, does it allow fair? Arguably, yes.
Yeah, it's it's actually.
Can I follow, because mine's following on that with Utah, so when I was applying for a cow, moose in Utah, when you had to choose one species, my odds were thirty percent for cow moose. I'm sorry, a cow bison, sorry. I was applying for a cow bison, my odds were thirty percent, when they allowed you to apply for all the species, those odds went to one percent. Because everybody that was putting in for sheep now was also putting in for bison. And so I saw this real time in Utah, what we're talking about, in the reverse.
Um, yeah, so just to be clear, the bighorn sheep, desert bighorn, and mountain goat tag quotas are set in January. That draw happens pretty quick here. The moose doesn't happen until May, so how would we, would you then kick everybody out of the moose draw? That drew a sheep goat.
Moose would have to be last on your draw order.
That that's what I want to make sure, you can't. Put that in here, uh sheep goat, then moose currently.
Okay. It would have to be this to your point, the quotas aren't even set, so we can't.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
One.
Uh, yeah.
Well, sorry, sorry, John, one one point, what we're making in regards, anybody concerned about? How would we address the issue of those draws being different times? Let's say, for for argument's sake, an applicant draws his nanny goat tag, and then he has time to sit there and think, crap, now I'm out of the moose draw, do I really want to be out of the moose draw, maybe I'll turn my goat tag in? And and how do you handle that? You can't, so you just make it clear upfront. You're done, so.
Doug?
I'm just gonna say, you probably take the current system likely can't track, we can figure it out.
Okay.
It's just not an easy one.
I'm trying to.
Yeah, yeah, I I just don't want to, I don't want to put it in front of the commission and say, we can't do this in our current system. Because we are rebuilding the system, and.
Yeah, there would be a lot of those.
Yeah. I just think it'll be.
Fair enough, thanks for uh for that, uh Danielle, then we then we probably want to start wrapping this up, so.
I think mine was to address Jenny's question a long time ago about whether we need to address application rates. And I would say, I think most people are happy with the way the sheep goat moose draws are working, from what I've heard. The only thing that we keep hearing about is concerns over the high number of application rates. So my answer to that question is yes, this group should be trying to address application rates, but because that is the number one complaint that the agency is hearing, at least.
So we'll have to do a good marketing job uh of this, I think, to folks, because it could be worse than the uh limiting the archery from over the counter to draw. I'm pretty sure a lot of people probably won't, you know, like this or swallow it, but so we have to do a good job to tell them that, hey, one of the key reasons we're doing this is to make the odds better for everybody to draw, to draw all the species. I wonder with everything else we're doing, do we need to prioritize some of our recommendations or things we're trying to do, if we can't get them all done at once? Like, this would be lower priority than something else, or?
That that'd be hard for us right now, given where we are. Uh, just my answer, I I would, I like what we have, where some of these are really broad consensus, right? And we feel really strongly as a group about those, others have some differing opinions and so on, that tends to carry some of that, you know, in it in its numerical way.
I'm fifty fifty on this, but I'm just afraid of um client blowback, blowback, you know, it's like people what what are you trying to do, you know, so the marketing aspect, I think, can be significant.
You know, there's, I mean, to Diane's, or to, sorry, Danielle's point, we have uh you know, we have multiple objectives here, this is one of them, but it's not in our vision overall, right? We didn't say in our vision to raise, uh to address these, but it is something that uh has has come up, so also just keep that in mind in terms of what our vision says, this this is not front and center in the vision.
I I think that um those complaints we heard about application rates, I think it's gonna be a good example, be careful what you ask for. Because I think, I think that things are saying, we need to go back to our front money, things like that. And when we come back and say, we've solved the problem, you can only apply for one species, we are gonna get skewered. So, I mean, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna.
You really think it's gonna be that?
We're gonna get bad, this this is gonna be bad. You know, we'll we'll have a chance to vote on these, obviously, and I want to save time for that, which is fine, speeding this up a bit, but um, you know, your instincts and your experience and your awareness of what's been written, and all of that should come into play right now. You know, as we consider this, but we wanted to give it a good fair hearing, and we're looking at some alternative, well, including status quo. So that, that's all fair, awesome. Oops, sorry, Doug.
Yeah, I just think that, I I don't know that we are going to get skewered, I mean, using Andy's, Andy's example. I think, you know, i- if somebody came to me and said, okay, you can either apply for one of the four, but if you apply for moose, you're gonna have a thirty percent chance versus if you can apply for all four, you only have a one percent chance. From a number standpoint, that to me just, you know, hits me right between the eyes, I said, hey, I'd rather have a thirty percent chance.
It's not going back to that.
Yeah, that was a, that was just a one example with cow, bison.
Yeah, we don't want to throw those numbers around.
I know, but it's just an example. Yeah.
I do think, you know, any reform of this scale needs an explanation, you know? Because we've seen this, because we've seen this, we are starting to consider this, and we landed here, you know, that kind of stuff, but but uh, you know, there's still time to to frame this.
Because I know we're running out of time, any other existing issues, there was one I wanted to bring up as a potential other item to ask, and I don't think it's appropriate for the reissue meeting. But if it is, tell me, so I want to still talk about the alternate list opt-in feature in the primary draw, and I don't know if we want to discuss that now or not, but rather than going to a call list and making staff have to work. I still think when you apply for one of these sheep moose goat, that you can say, I choose, I sign here to opt in to be an alternate. That means if someone returns that license that you applied for, your card gets charged, and that license is yours, period. Up till whatever window, before the season.
The pre-approval option, right?
Pre-approval, it it's automatic, the license charge is sent to you, you can still return that if you're in the window. Uh, but do away with the chance of a license making it even to the reissue license, let's give them all out as we go. If you want to tackle that later, Danielle, totally fine, but.
So that'd be based on, that we would give it to the person with the lowest application number then, or would we do a random draw, everybody who's on the alternate list for that?
Sorry, it just, it would be based on next draw, next in line, like we do currently, we pull the first five, but we generate a list of all applicants in order, and it goes down, whoever opted in, and just the the computer assigns.
So it's faster, that's the reform.
It's faster, there's no staff involved, there's no calling, there's no, none of that.
And would it be specific to sheep goat moose, because that would be by answer whether we should consider that today or during the reissue discussion?
Yeah, I I wanted it for everything, any reissued license, so if you want to tackle that later, I think it could apply to all species.
So maybe hold it till the next meeting?
Yeah, that seems like it directly feeds into reissues.
Yeah, I would, I would say, especially if you want it for all, then we could, everybody agreed, we'll do it next time? I see lots of nods, thank you. Okay, thirty minutes left.
Need to vote on one of these three.
Yeah, we need, we need to get out of this box, and then uh, and then into the next, so uh I heard you say you want to have up or down votes on one or two. Um, we have three now, a status quo is an option, so you know, you want, you want to multi-vote, like, just a multiple choice on one, two, or three? They're substantially different, I would say, um but you may, some people may support both one and two, I want to give you that. I'm just logically working through it, right? So one at a time, up and down?
Yeah, one at a time, who wants this, who wants this, who votes for this?
Yeah, okay.
What if we get multiple same votes, though? If we get ten people that like both.
You only get one vote out of the three, you only get one vote out of the three then?
Well, then we could just do multiple choice, right, so? So what I want to be is faithful to the group, uh the choice arc, this is choice architecture, right? So the choice architecture here is we're gonna either force you into pick only apply once, apply for all, or keep it the status quo. Right, that's one choice set that we could put in front of you. The other, and that would be really clear, right, some people would say, don't bother, some people would fall into either camp. That would remove the ability for us to to see which of the first two, with every, with removing uh the other two, have a greater amount of support, so that'd be the one by one vote. But the risk of that is, Danielle rightly points out, we could have number one get seven out of fifteen, and number two get seven out of fifteen, or whatever, or both get nine out of fifteen, because it's better than nothing. So we may, we may not solve our problem with the one by one, e- even though it gives you a little more latitude.
Let's try it.
You want one by one? I got a motion for one by one, looking for nods. At the risk of stepping on our left foot on our right foot, we will proceed. Fair?
Just not showing your screen, if that's okay?
Well, I just make sure everybody reads these, so the first one, only apply for one license a year, does everybody understand what that means? So when I say on number one, that's what we're getting at, uh and maybe I'll just, maybe I can number these just to be really really, really clear, okay? So for uh vote number one, I'm gonna go off screen, and then we'll come back, you can read number two in a second, so just read number one. Does this, uh, do you agree this uh this draw working group should recommend to the commission? Number one, raise your hand if so, and say aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Hands up, sorry.
Yeah, leave your hands up, we're our logging votes, everybody can see, though, on the camera. Well done.
Wait, wait, I'm not that fast.
Almost well done. You can switch your arms if you want. You could have seven. Great, all right, now, looking back at our choices. Vote number two, apply, this would mean you could apply for all four, essentially, but you would only draw one per year. And there may be an order that's defining that, sheep goat moose, based on the biology and when those quotas come out, so there's some direction around that, everybody understand? Okay? So should this group recommend uh such? Raise your hand if you're on aye, or yes.
I think we can vote twice, right?
You can vote up or down on this, right, yeah, exactly. So one, two, three, four, five, six. Keep them up for a second.
So you can vote on each choice?
Yeah, that's a confusion point here.
Okay, well, maybe I'm confusing it.
One time?
You vote, I said with each, when we do this, this way, you can support the first one and you can support the second one, because it's a separate idea, and you may like them both. But you don't have to pick, I, the first choice, remember, was you have, I would have forced you to pick, but you didn't like that.
Liberty was part of our vision.
This is choice.
If I can vote twice.
Not too late to vote twice, just want to be clear, so for this, if you would support this on its own, right, it's just an idea that you like, that's fine, you don't have to like it more than the other one, you just have to like it. I got one, two, three, okay, we got new votes, Jonathan.
My arm's getting tired.
Sorry. Uh, we could have had you put your tags on, too, sorry, that'd be. Nolan's out, yeah, he's out, he's out.
I I don't like it better than my last vote, though.
This is my concern with it.
Think it's a good idea, that's what you're voting for, whether it's in conjunction with the first one.
That's right, it's a standalone idea.
It's a standalone idea.
That's all we wanted. What's that?
Does anyone want to add a vote to the first one who didn't know they could vote twice, just to clarify? We're good, okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, then I'm leaving my hand down.
Wow, that's a good point. All right, and then there's the status quo. If you believe on the merits, just status quo is a better idea in terms of not changing any of these sorts of things, raise your hand now. All right, you got one, two, three, four, five. So now you can see the relative.
I did, I did.
Oh, sorry, up again. Steve, Nolan, Slav.
For two times.
Jenny. All right, hands down, well done, everybody. Um, so what this means, of course, is none of these had a broad majority, right, but some had more, one had a majority, but not a.
Ten for two.
Yeah.
Can you just take mine off, too?
Take it off.
I'm on priority base, yeah, I like number one.
Yeah, me too.
I'm good with one, two, we're gonna do this, yeah.
I think it would be split between one and two people.
We're gonna go for a tie, right, girl, take mine off, too.
So status quo is out, like I'll vote it, so yeah.
Status quo is always a major order, is out of order, however, we can, we can fix this, so.
Vote one and two, and you only get one vote.
Yeah, well, that, essentially, we're back to the the multiple choice, right, because you may decide. So to resolve the two, the the challenge here, let's go back to the main screen, and we will have you vote one time, either for choice number one, or choice number two, or choice number three.
We already removed number three.
Yeah.
Can we just revote on the first two?
I think three can be gone, but.
All right.
Yeah, five votes.
All right, we're looking for, in essence, then, I will, I will reform it, we're looking for the majority vote, right, of the two that were high, higher scores, okay? So you may choose one, or you may choose two in the following vote. Either you apply once uh for one license each year, or you can apply for all four, right, just like.
I just have a question for two, so if you put in four, and you drew your sheep first, like, and it just pulls your name out of the hot, before you guys move.
Yes, you'd be out of the play for the rest. All right, back to the camera. If you believe the number one, that is one, you can apply for one species per year, raise your hand right now. All right.
Just read me the names, one at a time.
Yep, Doug, Lauren, Jonathan, me, Andy, John, Austin, and me.
John F.
Two Johns?
And we're missing a commission.
You're right.
I got eight, is that right?
All right, on the other hand, if you believe number two, the option where uh you may apply for uh you may apply for multiple, but you'd only be awarded one. Raise your hand here, this should be the opposite, no one can vote again. All right, so you got Steve, Terry, uh Nolan, John L.
Five, eight to five.
There, well done. Okay. Okay, so back to. Our main point. We agreed broadly in the zero, one hundred. Um, situation, right, where the second part of the split drive from our previous species. Would be one hundred percent of those, so in essence, there'd be no preference draw. Um, technically, when we advertise this, we'll go out as points, you know, based on bonus points and so on. Um, and then there's the exception of desert bighorn, so everybody understand, Rock, clear? So when we talk about what this group did, this is the language we want you to use. You don't have to get into all of that, who voted for what and everything else, just be faithful to what the group decided. Um, same thing with, okay, so residency allocation, we said just keep as it's, straight up, no change. Youth preference, we said there should be no preference for youth. Yeah, okay. Uh, bonus points. Where did we land on here? Oh, we voted, this was.
This was once in a lifetime harvest for. All bulls, rams, and goats. And a three-year waiting period.
Yeah, that's all this in red, it was too much to put in the box.
And continue to charge the point fee with an opt-in opt-out. Things on this slide.
We didn't vote on this.
I think we did.
We did, we got, you know, we got unanimity.
We didn't vote on this, but I don't approve of the third year. You went past this and you said we would vote on it later.
Oh, for the, what the number was for Brian.
You're right.
Four-year, five-year.
Do you think we're being argued?
Yeah, when I brought up that question, we were doing. Like to start, you know?
Said yes to extend the moose.
Here's the moose point, if you're the one to like to.
No, we're talking about when you're eligible to draw the license in the draw, how many points you have to have.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so the way we left this. We said you're eligible for a ramble or either sex goat once you have three points, similar to today, right?
Yep.
You would purchase points as today. Your application year four in the draw would have four chances, second year you'd have five chances. There's low demand cow, moose, and ewes would still be eligible down to zero points. Repference points would be added to your current total awaited points, for example, three twenty-two is twenty-five. Points would remain species-specific. They continue to offer the option, not the mandate, for charging a point fee for sheep, goat, and moose points. So we have, I thought we were all here, this was just rewording the language, I don't remember any dissent here.
Who's talking about?
Three-year waiting period.
So I think we should accept it all, or I moved the accept it all voting to vote on the three-year waiting period. That would be, that would iron out the problems.
What's the alternative?
Overvoted, but it's your vote, I don't want the, you're entitled to it.
Three years.
I don't want, you should have to wait three years.
And then I look at it, and this is why I brought this up, is if we're trying to reduce application rates, you could actually raise it. Which would allow less people in.
We could do that for zero, three, or five.
There we go.
Zero, three, or five.
If we get rid of the three years, I don't think it's fair to all of us that have put in and waited all those years and.
Let's see, I, I see it as a three years that we're just bumping it down the road. So, at one year, you have fifteen hundred people that apply, three years later, those fifteen hundred people all dump into the weighted points or the bonus point draw. The same thing that you're doing, so we're just kicking whoever the new applicants are three years down the road.
All right.
Which is about, I don't think we have more time for discussion.
I was saying, it's not gonna, I'm gonna get outvoted, which I'm not gonna die on, so.
Well, we could, so, back to choice architecture, so we can vote uh, up or down on the three points, right? Or I could give you an option to propose zero, um.
Just go with three and I'll not vote in this drawing. No, no, I'll vote, I just won't vote, vote, won't be good.
That's fine, if.
But Steve had another alternative items that I'm gonna do, about for zero, three, or five.
Yeah, that's right.
Because I don't think the discussion was around, nobody was supporting that, so I can let it go, it didn't seem like the discussion went there at once I proposed it. But that is an opportunity to reduce it, don't fight catching this. One thing I would say real quick is, zero, twelve-year-old is gonna draw that license. And that's might be fine, but it's one thing I think about my kids, it's pretty young.
All right, so, just to be fair, again, uh, what we would vote for here is, you would vote for either, you can be eligible for ramble or either sex. Go at zero point potentially in the first year, right, that's what, that's the point, that would be one vote. You all ask, we vote for zero and you'd say aye. In the second vote, I would say if you vote for three years, there you would say aye and raise your hand. Everybody good, this is structured? Okay. So, um, would you prefer um, to be eligible for ramble or either sex goat immediately or in zero, year zero? Raise your hand. We have one.
Five next. Sorry, Steve.
All right, I have to do it at the end cuz three is in the middle, so. Uh, if you vote for three years, uh, essentially as it is today, raise your hand. Okay, we've got.
Put my caps for you.
Everybody but.
Everybody, no.
Everybody but Steve and John, right? Yes, is that you, you're good, okay, thanks, John. Just like, we might have thought.
Sorry.
And after five years, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for being brave.
I do, like the commission.
You guys are great. All right.
I appreciate you standing up.
Four forty-six. Next steps. So, May, probably gonna be May second.
Likely.
Likely May second in Montrose, uh, Andy, Nolan, Doug, and Pete have kindly offered to be our spokespeople. Uh, we will work with you to give you some PowerPoint slides that summarize these, but it, it will be faithful to the language that we have uh, so far. Right, so it should be no surprises coming out of what's briefed back to.
So it'll be on the second of the two days?
We don't know for sure, but that's the trend.
Last time it was first. Everybody understand what's gonna happen, so um, we want you four to find a time, so be looking at your calendars right now. Uh, of when we could meet and we will schedule that, Danielle and I, with you all. And we'll have some slides ready for you to review and talk about who's taking which slide and, you know. But I want you to get over your skis on the language, so it's gonna be pretty tight, but if last time was any clue to Terry, what did we learn? You never know what questions are gonna come.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so we want you to be prepared, but don't, you don't have to overpromise things that we didn't say, right? Just say, we didn't cover that that well, or I don't recall, it's okay, right, it's not testifying. All right.
And one, one question, or one comment on the PowerPoint. Danielle, will you make sure notes can be seen, cuz I couldn't see my notes for whatever reason on the part that I had, and I know you had.
Yeah, I had the same thing.
Same problem, so just either print them out, I would recommend whoever's there, print them out and bring them with you.
Yeah.
So maybe I print off the separate ones, cuz the issue is if I send that version to the commission. Then the public can see your notes, so that's why the notes were not visible during the presentation.
I just wanna.
Made it a little harder.
The leaky slide worked, but it took a little bit.
Okay, so thanks to each of you for doing that and everyone else, you know, they're representing us, so give them a little bit of slack when they're, they're on camera. It can be a little nerve-wracking, right? Uh, but we never let our uh, our friends and partners hang there, so we'll help out, right? And then uh, the next meeting, May twenty-ninth, will be in Dillon.
Yes.
Um, and we're covering reissues and such related topics. We are gonna ask you today, since this clock is ticking, um, to already start thinking about data requests uh, and so on. And we need a couple of weeks to help uh, logically work through those and structure that, so if we could, uh, we don't want any last-minute data requests. So, May fifteenth, but even earlier is a lot better. If you have any, you don't have to give them to, to us now, but think about them, right? Yes?
You did ask us earlier when we finished that one slide, we wrote down some language of how we were gonna present this in a simpler fashion and all the forward way to that. Are we gonna talk about that today? Or do we not have time? I did write down a couple paragraphs for you that I could.
Send it to me?
Yeah, absolutely, send those along, um, we, yeah, we, we're gonna stay tight within the, the, the points that we've made. But, you know, when we together, we may say, you know, because of this and understanding that. So there could be anything around context that you wanna share, everyone should feel free to contribute that. But we don't wanna get, uh, we don't want one person editorializing at this point, right, we stay true to the group's agreement.
Yeah, we're timed, timed vows, right, but we have minutes to give us, ten minutes, whatever it is, or the, I mean, the agenda always has, it's always.
We have an hour for presentation and commissioner questions, so usually we try to have the presentation be not more than twenty to thirty minutes, so we have time for discussion.
Okay.
Um, I think John also had a request of the group to get some idea of what kinda scenarios we could share, walk through. This idea of allocation by choice, right?
Something about allocation, it was on the first slide, I can't remember what it was, something about allocation and.
Is allocations are all four choices or?
Yes, where are we calculating?
Yeah, he's asking what data he needs to bring.
Oh, so would it be helpful if we picked like one or two hot codes with the current, or the quota from twenty twenty-three? And walked through what it would look?
Make the hunt code so that you can see it specifically, cuz right now, we don't have. To my knowledge, a hunt code that'll actually make it happen. So, I'll make the hunt code and then.
With imaginary quota and then show it.
Yeah, I'll basically just copy out our draw recap, so it'll look just like a regular draw recap that we're looking at with the different scenarios that we have, so.
Could you do a high-low quota, so we have an idea of the general, like, zero to five point, and a high demand?
Sure. So, but we want allocation calculated at the beginning, right, so total quota. We want allocation calculated per choice level. And then allocation calculated.
The other one was like all residents first.
Yeah, all, all residents first. And then non-res, choice level. And then did you guys want anything from secondary draw? We talked about allocation going in the secondary. I don't know what I would show you, but.
Can we just get, um, this is related to your question or something. Can we just, I know we can pull it out ourselves, but can we pull out the number of youth applicants um, for each species? And how many of those are currently successful in the primary draw and how many apply in the secondary draw?
Uh, do you want the example, I just wanna know, there were twelve thousand deer, you know, youth applied for deer license in primary. And six thousand over here, and only three thousand apply in the secondary.
What, are they youth preference, because isn't the preferences for no tags, count tags?
I, I just wanna know the number of applicants.
Okay.
I can.
What, what's following through?
Oh. What's that?
With, what's up, a person is following through?
I don't care, I don't care about who's following through, I just wanna know total applicants and successful applicants.
So I can do total apps, and which one is others successful in both the primary and the secondary draw?
The point I'm getting at is that a lot of people are concerned that one hundred percent preference in the secondary draw. And pushing all those licenses to secondary draw, the youth are gonna draw them all, but I don't think that the youth numbers are that high.
But that's what I'm saying, is youth preference doesn't apply to every tag.
Right, I know, I know, but whoever's successful in primary is not gonna go in the secondary. I guess they wanna apply for a B tag or E tag, I guess they could have drawn.
Are we good to stop the YouTube stream?
We're, we're about to, I think, yeah, just wanna make sure there's nothing else.
We can begin to close the comments, stop the YouTube.
All right, so any final comments for the good of our order, everybody clear on what our next steps are, how we'll use the information? Uh, how grateful we are to all of you for all the hard work today.
Thank you, everybody, this was a good day, but tougher for some reason.
It started easy and soft, but it got rolling, right?
Yeah, we got into some good material, thanks everyone for your patience and uh, and your hard work. So, uh, we're gonna go off camera now and then we'll take a picture against this back wall.